All right, well, good evening. Welcome to the Ford Library Trustees Meeting for June 11th, 2025. First up is the consent agenda from the previous meeting. Does anyone have any questions or issues with the previous agenda? If not, can I have a motion to accept it?
So moved.
And may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of accepting the consent agenda?
Hi.
Hi. All right. That's fantastic. All right. This evening, would you welcome Jim?
Thank you.
To give us an update on the building and everything that's going on. So take it away.
Okay. Thanks for having me. My name is Jim Crook, in case somebody doesn't know. I've been here almost 15 years as the senior custodian. I've seen a lot happen in those past 15 years. New chiller, new boilers, new rugs, the new lighting. I've seen some improvements come. I'd like to pray it going. I'd like to give a shout out to the rest of the custodian staff. You may not know them, you may not recognize names. The junior custodian is Frankie Panchatori. Frankie comes from the Savage Center, the school department. He's been with us about two years now, I believe, or going on to his second year. So he's learning the ropes. He's a good worker, and I think he's an asset to the library. We also have three part-time gentlemen. Jack Kirkham, Joe Mello, and Jerry Bosnati. Jack's been with us about 12 years. Joe, about 10, and Jay in that eight-year tenure. So they put some time in at the library. They all do a great job. Yes.
The junior guy came in the schools?
Yes.
How long was he over there with us?
I think that he was with the school department a year. He's a younger guy, he's 21.
He's turned 21 this year.
Twenty twenty-one.
Because I was thinking that the fellow who was in charge of that kind of work there and became the facilities manager would have been a great guy to tutor under. But it sounds like by the time our guy showed up, all had already moved on.
Yeah, yes, he did, yes, yeah. But Frankie, he's a quick learner, so I think hopefully he'll be here for a long time. So the part-time guys, actually, they cover the Sunday shifts. They cover the vacation times, sick times. I'm glad that we have them on there because there's a lot of time that does need to get covered, especially with the Sunday openings, they take care of that. Frankie also covers Tuesday through Saturday, and he works from 1:00 till 9:00 and does the closing. While I'm on this, I'd like to give a shout out to the town facilities department. Paul Ricciardi, Chris Bowland, and his guys, now that they've taken over the maintenance of the town buildings, they've done wonders here. They're great to work with. Their skill level is very high, and it's been a pleasure to work with them. So we're very lucky to have them help us out there. And one other company is Graham Bowland Landscaping. He does the plowing in the wintertime, landscaping in the event times, does a good job, always gets us open in the wintertime, so we don't have to have it the way. We have a good team here, I think. I'd like to talk a little bit about the building itself, the systems that we have in place, the boiler system, the heat has worked as expected. We had no major issues this year, and we did have a very cold winter. A couple of little things, a belt had to be replaced, but overall, it worked well. The AC unit, again, and you can feel it, is working well. We did have one problem. We had electrical cable to the flow valve that was chewed by either a mouse or some rodent, so we had to have that replaced. But luckily, it was before it got really hot, and I think we were down maybe a day until they got it fixed, so that's running well. We've had no electrical issues in the building. The new lighting that's here has worked very well. I've had a few bulbs burn out, even though the RLEDs, they don't last three years, like they say. But there's no issue there. Plumbing issues, again, although there are a few washers and faucets that go, we haven't been, had any issue there.
I'm pretty sure knock on wood.
Knock on wood. I shouldn't be saying these things, but plumbing. The elevator passed inspection. We did have the seals replaced, and it was last year we replaced the hydraulic seals, and since then, we haven't had any problem. The pass, no issues, so that was, that was a benefit. And the other thing that we had done recently is we had a new fire control panel put in to replace the old one, which was giving us some problems, and so we're up to date there. And overall, the basic cooperating systems here are working pretty well. Again, knock on wood. I think the big issue that is coming up is the building study. I'm sure Clayton has brought you all up to speed on that. It's been a lengthy process, but we're moving along. Any technical questions? I'm going to pass them off to Clayton because he's got it all down. But we did have the water infiltration study done. They did find some areas where there was leakage, and I think at this point, they're putting a proposal together, and we'll move forward from there. So that'll be exciting to see what happens, and hopefully, we can get some new paint done. It'd be nice to replace some of this old paint. It's been here for a long time. I think that basically covers everything that I want to say. Are there any questions that maybe I could answer?
What are the systems that the fire control panel controls?
That controls, obviously, the allowance to the fire department, controlling the smoke sensors that are in the building. So it's crucial to have that up to date. The older was dated, and it wasn't operating properly, and they couldn't even read the screen anymore. They couldn't get parts. But as we moved out of the pandemic, the supply chain was still a little slow, so it's taken us a while, but we finally got it in.
So it's purely detection?
Yes.
There isn't any suppression component?
No, that is, you're right, it's detection. The sprinkler system that we have throughout the building, that would be a suppression system, and we're up to date with that. It's been fully inspected, and I think we're good for that.
No, I don't have any questions. I mean, I think the building always looks great, and it's always, you know, obviously clean and all that, but it just, it's always organized, and I know you work with the team here to keep things straight, and the rest of your team, so we appreciate that greatly.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
I'll pass that along to the, please, to the team.
I would love to echo that, and just thank you, Jim, and the team, for all the work that you guys do to keep us open in the winter. You know, I know there's, you know, there can be some cold early mornings when the snow and ice has to move, so we can open for, you know, making sure that it's cooled down during the summertime when we get the serious heat. Attending when we find weird wings and are trying to figure out how do we report those most recently. You know, staying on and managing the contractors that help us out so much, too. There's a lot of pieces. When it goes going well, it's not noticed, so we definitely appreciate all the work.
Well, thank you.
And also, working with the facilities department. I know there's been a transition and, you know, working in new ways of getting supplies, and that hasn't always been the most easy, or, you know, it's been a change of how we've done things.
It has.
I appreciate your flexibility and just making the best of what we can, so we can get the more efficient use of Rostow.
Thank you.
I also wanted to mention, I really specifically wanted to call out, we started doing composting here last year, and you guys picked it up, and we've been doing weekly composting now without, like, any hiccup whatsoever. I'm wondering if you have any feedback from your perspective on how the composting is
We go anywhere from one to two small kitchen-style bags a week, so I think that everybody in the library is taking advantage of the program. It does go fairly smoothly. I think it's a great program to have in the library.
It's an easy way where we can take staff food waste and take it out of the waste stream and put it in the compost, which has been really nice to be able to integrate that and have that as part of, you know, just kind of our, our effort to contribute, our part to be part of that townwide effort, too.
I would like to point out, I don't know if everybody noticed, a new tree is up on Blackpool. We thought it was a red bud, but I guess, what is it?
It's a dogwood.
A dog.
Which matches the other one. We have two blooming dogwoods right now.
It's a nice addition.
It is. I know, so I drew a box.
That doesn't look like a red bud, does it?
But it's come along nice.
It is. It is. It's nice.
Funny rain.
The composting, I have the departments that have, also are doing composting. Do the representatives from those get together and swap hints or ideas or problems or something?
There really hasn't been anything that I've been party to. It's a pretty low-key program, and not a lot to it, really, but, and I'm not sure who else has participated in the town.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
I know we are.
So nobody seems to feel the need for, you know?
Not really, no, at this point. That's good.
Yeah.
Things are going smooth, so.
Some we could certainly encourage people to do at home. It's been easy enough for us to do with a lot of people here. It'd be easy for any individual to do at home. So any individual is personally composting, you know, it's something I've been doing for years. I have to talk about it, both my personal experience and our experience in the library. It's not an intimidating process if anybody's concerned.
It's with Black Earth, right? The one?
They are.
Yeah, so, yeah, we have it at home, too. It's a great program, yeah. A lot of coffee grinds go on.
It's where these are, that's right.
Probably.
All of Indiana people see it. We like Indiana scenes.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
All right, let's move on to reports.
All right. The first is personnel in contract. I don't have any contract updates. We do know that James Kai has announced, graduated, who we're excited to see. Him and Resi are both graduated this spring, and James has announced that he's willing to leave us. I just saw him earlier tonight. I was going to congratulate him personally, but he's, this is his last summer before he heads off to college by the fall. So he's told us he's no longer going to be working as a page after this one.
Where is he going to college?
He's going to George Washington.
I'm DC.
Is he going in library or something else?
He, I don't know if they have a library science. Most schools don't, and that's a really graduate-level program. He's expressed that he's interested in anthropology, but he's not sure what the future will have for that, so he's really exploring the field, and certainly not going with a deferred major, as far as I know. Which I totally support, I think. Leaving the future open and exploring what could be interesting and open up doors for his future is a really wise way to go. He's a smart and very capable young man, and it's going to be fun to see where he goes next and what he does with school. Programming, we have lots of programming going on. I brought some of the stuff, it's out right now. We are, you know, as you all know, I'm on the organizing team for Juneteenth, so I hope you can all join for at least some of the fun on Saturday, this Saturday, from 12:30 to 3:30. We have some really fun new additions this year. We have, I just met this after, earlier today, with Jorge Akra, who is an Afro-Caribbean storyteller, Harvard-educated historian, and musician as well. He's bringing some pungas, he's going to do some music and storytelling. We are going to have some group singing with a soloist from Ford High School. We have some other singers, we have a great band, we've got a hip-hop rap artist who's going to do some. We have the annual Juneteenth Honor Awards. It's going to be a really nice affair. We're looking forward to it. So if you haven't been able to make it before, well, check it out, it's going to be fun on the Norwood Common. We had a great time at Pride at the beginning of the month. We saw a lot of people, and I got there to the very tail end of it, but I heard great things from the staff who were able to be there with the whole thing, and people were really excited to see us there. So it's really fun to have both Pride and Juneteenth to, you know, really kind of anchor the month. Other things that we have coming up next week, we've got CFA Society of Boston talking about borrowing from credit scores. Liz Barber, who does, you may have seen, she does a lot of cooking demonstrations, is doing a program in the Edible Garden, which should be really fun. She'll be coming and talking about how to roast salads, so. And then we have a kind of an important topic that we, you know, cannot look away from. It's a community conversation about domestic violence with people from Second Step, and which is a prevention education organization happening. We have more information on Second Step on the back here, but that's happening on June's report. Heath is doing another in the Be Media Wise series on how to find accurate information as adopted for this one, right at the top of July, on July 8th. So a little preview for what's happening next month.
And I saw some real positive feedback about the one he had just done. It was, I think, posted online.
Heath has got some really nice feedback on those. Yeah, I included a little bit, I think, in the correspondence section, too.
Great job.
And summer reading is starting soon. We're doing summer reading for adults and for kids. Summer reading for adults starts on Friday the 20th, and then for kids starts on the 23rd. I didn't bring the posters for the movie matinees, but those have been super popular, too. As you can see from the monthly calendar, there's, like, things happening all the time. So it's really exciting to see just how, you know, kind of the breadth of different programs that are attracting folks and...
And the puzzles.
And the puzzle race is happening, that's right. And so if people want to go from Juneteenth celebration to come and then do the puzzle race, that's happening this Saturday, and that has been wildly popular, it's true. This Friday, we're closing the library, as I hope everybody's aware, because we will be, it's our annual staff development day. I'm looking forward to that. We're going to be starting here and having a conversation with the deputy chief of the Fire Department, John Cody, and talking about evacuation safety measures. Then we'll be going over to the Civic Center and doing some Che Guevara with somebody who's done a public program here. And then we're going to have some lunch, and then the afternoon is going to be with Maureen Felencir, who's an author of the book on redefining, reimagining success, and looking at what, you know, what are the, you know, the factors that help us be successful? What are the different domains of our life that we can, that we can define success and that we can find challenging to our successes, and what can we do to knock those out of the way, both professionally and personally, if we believe in integrated self? She recently wrote a book that you may have heard me talk about. She's actually visiting us from Colorado, has been doing a series of workshops here for people in the mental health industry, and is tailoring this one, this program specifically for us on Friday afternoon. So it should be a really rewarding afternoon. Oh, the other program that I want to make sure is on everybody's radar is the CFCE Open House at the Porier Village Center on Roosevelt Ave. That will be on Friday afternoon, the 27th, is that what we agreed? Yeah, the calendar is down the other end of the table, but on the 27th. So that should be really nice. The Housing Authority is helping sponsor that with some, you know, there's going to be an ice cream truck for folks there, and some entertainment. It's going to be a really fun afternoon and a great way to introduce anybody in the neighborhood who isn't already familiar with what we have happening there to the services that are being provided out of the port of each other. Excited for that.
I'm hoping to make that final. I haven't, I'm not sure.
That is pretty much what's happening in programming. The next is the maintenance and repair. And as Jim teased, the building study is still happening. I spoke with the architects last week and saw a draft. It's going to be a couple hundred pages. It's going to be quite a document when we get the final report. They are getting, they have a cost estimator who's going through, because the architects employed several consultants to do the water penetration study, they did code studies, they had several different specialists who came, they hired, they have all the reports from them, and then the cost estimator is combing through all those and figuring out, all right, what's the cost implement, the changes that are required and recommended from each of the specialists. Cost estimator has to give the architect, the deadline for them to get the numbers was this Friday coming up, and they've already drafted a lot of the language. They'll be putting those into tiers, things that the architect thinks that needs to be done, you know, immediately, you know, one, two, third level tier. They anticipate that just the tier one alone is going to be quite expensive, and they said, this gets a little complicated, but the, if you perform repairs that exceed 30% of the cost of the assessed value of a building over a three-year period, it triggers a requirement to bring the building up to accessibility and safety codes that are current today, not when the building was last repaired. So the architect's advice was that we secure the funding to 30% of our current assessed value, because that tier one, those tier one repairs are likely to exceed that 30% value. 30% of our current assessed value is $1.4 million. So at the Capitol Avenue Committee meeting earlier this week, that's what I presented and said, this is what the town needs to be budgeting for cabinet repairs in this building in the next, like, foreseeable, like, year to three-year period, because we can't exceed that amount without a significant expense for the, like, to come in compliance with codes. What that means is that we're looking also at a major renovation project in the next five to 10 years to address the remaining repairs, coming up to compliance with all the code regulatory requirements, and building the library that are, deserves to have, to serve our future needs. So it's not unusual to be looking every 20, 25 years at renovation projects, so this isn't, is right on the average for the state when we need to be looking at these renovation projects.
Did you get any kind of feedback, positive, negative, helpful, critical, from the other committees that you were consulting with them?
Oh, we have a lot of valuable information, yeah. You mean the other, the architecture, other people that have gone through and done this elsewhere?
I got the impression, maybe I misread, that some of this had started to be presented to the town.
So, you know, so we did the, so we had the very first department head meeting for the Capitol Avenue Committee on Monday, where we were just making sure that every department that we had, that we were building our documents, going to the Capitol Avenue Committee. And people understand, I mean, there's a lot of other capital needs in town, but there is support, and there's some questions. Paul Ricciardi brought up, you know, a very valid point on Monday, that the assessed value of this building is rather hard to, to know. Right now, and what the architects went with is what we have, is what's on the books, is the assessed value of the building, but Norwood does that assessing, and there is not a market for libraries like this. There are, you know, nobody's going to be selling a building like this. So determining an actual market value, what does that mean? There is not really, there isn't a market for buildings like this. So is it the replacement value? Well, it's going to cost more than the, for some, you know, the current assessed value, I don't believe is the replacement value. The replacement cost, if we just had to build a brand-new library, anywhere close to it, not anywhere close. So an argument could be made that it should be reassessed at a higher value, we should raise our cap. That's, but the architect can't say, well, we don't believe in this assessment, we believe it should be assessed here. That's another way to go down, so that's a four. There's also some considerations, some of the statutory requirements, we may get some waivers for because of the historic nature of the building. The most challenging one is likely to be on plumbing. In 2023, my rudimentary understanding of plumbing code changed and made it so that a, that it's, the ratio of toilets to potential capacity of a building was shrunk, so you have to add more toilets for a, per person or for, you know, per cabinet. I don't know where we put more toilets in this building. That's going to be a real challenge to wrap around, how would we do that? But we don't have, we don't have, we have insufficient number of toilets in the building right now for our code.
Do you have any lines at the bathroom?
That's the issue. We have heard for a long time that especially the toilets on the first floor, we have three toilets there, but they're, they're not great. Like, they could stand an upgrade, for sure. So just the existing bathrooms would be nice to refresh. There's some up here that, we have two toilets, you know, up here on the top floor, but you have to go upstairs to go there. So you didn't even get to count those as public, as, as restroom.
I would bet that the architects were working, this is not their first rodeo.
Oh, no, it's not. Not before.
So they'll be able to come up with a proposal that shows, you know, this is where we've been putting these extra bathrooms in libraries like yours.
What, where that's going to be is not in this report. This is really just looking at what we need to do to take care of the existing building. And the recommendation is to do the repairs up until it triggers that code, will stay and meet that threshold, and that, because we originally had a proposal from them to go and do that future planning, and I think it is going to be in everybody's best interest to go and do that planning, which will lead to this larger renovation, including, I mean, one of the components that people like to talk about is where are we going to put the stained glass windows that are at Town Hall right now? That is part of that, you know, that future, you know, that future of the library. We are, all of us are eager to do that, but first, we have to take care of just the fundamentals to ensure the building sustains and lasts for, you know, another 150 years. Then we can worry about the pretty glass. It's big. I should see that study next week. Anybody who's interested, it's, I think, the individual consultant reports to the architects, some of them exceed 100 pages. It's going to be quite a tone that we're going to get from the architects next, next week. Has a lot of photographs, it's very detailed. I think it's going to be a very good working document. There also will be meeting with a team of us here, so that we can review it, ask, answer any questions, and they will not call it final and done until we all agree that this is a useful document to guide us forward. There'll be more about this, I'm sure, at the town meeting in the fall, because that's when we will have to, you know, request from the town that additional capital so we can do these repairs.
That's the big lift. And then my friends at the library are next, aren't they?
Yeah, their final meeting in the fiscal year is tomorrow.
Or is it tonight?
No, it's tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, it's tomorrow. And they're going to, obviously, they'll be electing their officers and taking care of that business, along with their, their meetings coincide with the psychic that will be here as well, so I don't know if there's a tie in between. But, yeah, and so they're obviously going to, they don't really have any fundraising plan for the summer months, but I know they're going to obviously pick up in the fall with plans for the next book sale, as well as there are ideas floating around for additional fundraising, like, outside of the library. Taking some of those programs, like, I remember, like, the indoor golf, perhaps, doing something like that. So they're, they're looking at those, so.
Cool. Next section is on correspondence. I included, and some of these have been trickling through, and I have emailed some of them to you just as they came out to keep everybody apprised, but I wanted to have one place where we could turn to for posterity and just have it all collected, so it's not just in our inboxes. The correspondence section this month starts with the press release from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners after Maureen Amiot spoke at the Massachusetts Library Association Conference last morning, that talks about the discontinued products and what will be continued, and highlights the impact of the federal cuts on Massachusetts. There are some people that are talking about, you know, are there anything that the state can pick up? BPL is talking about picking up a little bit and is providing some additional language soon for what they're going to be able to pick up as library for the Commonwealth. But there, there will be cuts. The, you know, in the fine print, the easiest one to jump to is the list of continued and discontinued products, but they do highlight that they are changing the funding for eBooks that came from the state from $1 million and cutting it in half to $500,000. There's been some suggestions from the community that we make more, we provide greater awareness to the public about these cuts and how they're going to impact the services we can provide, which is something that I'm looking into, both how we can do here with our own website and what we can do in the Internet Library Network. A lot of these, they're impacting the entire state, and if we can convince, you know, have common messaging across the network that we reflect here, that seems like the strongest way to go forward. If people have other suggestions about ways that we can draw attention to these, you know, the impact of this here, certainly, later.
Since we're not the only library in this state or even in the country, I'm thinking that some of the representative organizations at the state level may have been trying to come up with a template of how to set up communications and planning and whatever else.
There are templates, for sure.
Have you seen what they have, and does it look like it's helpful?
I've seen what other folks have used, and, yes, there is useful stuff to look at. I could share some of those, so we could have something to consider. Or we could, that's also, that's what I'll be recommending to the network. The sales network was the most recent one, it was brought to my attention. We could do a little survey and see what else has been. It's other networks that have said. On a national level, there can be, there can be some important distinction, differences, depending on how libraries get their local funding. So the impact here is going to be very different than the impact of, like, CW margin, the libraries in Western Massachusetts, that are much more dependent upon federal funding for the eBook collections. We spend a fair amount of our electronic collection dollars on supporting that eBook collection, as do other members, you know, as does the network and many other members of the Internet Network. So our access...
So our access, while I expect will be negatively impacted, will not be as hard as other parts of the state. So you get lost in the nuances too quickly. How do we keep this simple and easy to communicate that we are going to feel in the back?
How hard would it be to identify three or four, just that number of libraries, where those aspects are very much like ours and not try to compare it to the whole breadth of libraries in Massachusetts? Is that worthwhile?
I'm not confident they're in a different place than we are right now. These are the conversations that are happening right now around tables around the state.
Clayton, did you say sales already sent out a message to their constituents?
What I've seen from sales is a note that they have on top of, if you access Overdrive through sales on the website. So it's not if you look at Overdrive through Libby on your phone, and it's not if you look at the Libby interface on the web, which you can do. But there's a special web interface to Overdrive. I don't know how many people use that interface, but that's where I think it was pointed out. I want to look and see if it's anywhere else.
So don't go like to the sales website, go through Libby to look at this?
Sales, Overdrive, exactly. That's where I've seen it. There could be other spots we need to look.
I think I saw today that the temporary restraining order for dismantling the IMLS was who they were going to proceed.
Okay, so they're continuing to dispossess them?
Yeah, so I think, you know, part of it is like what's happening in the courts and then planning to appoint for reductions.
The state right now is planning to not receive any federal funds in FY '26, which is on the federal calendar, so that starts up till the first. But they are planning for our fiscal year, which starts July 1st, which some of these changes will go into effect on July 1st. And, yeah, I mean, an injunction is only good as long as the injunction stays that the courts don't hold it. Or what we've also experienced, and what we're going to talk about in this memo, is how the, even if they're ordered to continue, if there's no staff at IMLS, when they took the 70 people and just laid them all off all at once, we've had requests for funds that there's nobody to actually fill the request. So even if the funds have to be available, okay, what are the mechanics to actually deliver them to us? They don't exist. It is, which is why they're looking at other means. Yeah, no, I had, yeah, I had conversations with her recently. I had conversations with one of the other persons in charge of services at the state for marginalized communities, Ally Dowd's. It's a tough time at the state level. It's a tough time for all of us as we're experiencing this. There's a blow-by-bow of the weekly emails from Marie with details of all that's happening. There are some interesting updates on eBooks. As I mentioned in my report, the eBook Summit, and there was a Connecticut law that was passed. There has been legislation introduced in New Jersey, which is promising and looking well. I learned last week about the state of Massachusetts legislation, where right now it seems like the eBook bill, there's two kind of main flavors of those. One is about eBook licensing, the other is about freedom to read for decked library workers so that people can come and, you know, come out of somebody's job for providing something, you know, for providing material access to material or to programs that isn't, you know, in alignment with our collective development policies to shield our new material workers. That's the freedom to read bills. And that, I believe, there was some attempt to actually put freedom to read writer on the state budget. So if that passes, then I might be our quickest way forward on that. The eBooks seem like they're going towards forming a commission, a multi-seat commission who will then be tasked with filing, with studying and have a deadline to file a report on the status of eBook pricing and access for our communities. The composition of that commission so far seems like it's going to be very library favorable. Includes the director, David Leonard of the Boston Public Library, includes representatives of the Massachusetts Library Association, the Massachusetts School Library Association, includes an eBook vendor like Overdrive, but it's not exclusive to Overdrive. So there's some other potential parties that could be also eBook providers, including the Digital Public Library of America, DVLA, and the New York Public Library are also big eBook providers that can fill that role. So it's not, the thing is not dry about how that commission even will be finally defined and what the composition will be, but that's where the direction that seems to be heading. Which could give us something to lean on, saying, okay, this is what's been recommended by all these experts, and then give the attorney general and the governor some real material to work with. Andrea Campbell also spoke at the Massachusetts Library Association Conference, as I think I referenced. And there were some people who were talking to her about the issue with publishers and providers, aggregators, price gouging libraries, which has been a charge across the country. And she was very interested to learn more. So we will be pursuing conversations with her to see if there is a consumer protection angle to improve our access to eBooks and more favorable replacements in terms.
Was that news to her?
It did seem to be news about eBooks. She's got a lot on her plate.
No, I was just curious if that was something.
It did seem to be something that she was very active and interested in learning more about. And it was real personal treatise to talk to her a little bit after that piece. She, Andrea Campbell, the Massachusetts Attorney General, was one of the 21 libraries that filed the suit against the federal actions of the executive order against the IMLS. Talking about, we fought for a long, hard time for the laws in this Commonwealth, and it's her responsibility to uphold them, and she's doing that job, so for that I'm grateful.
Sure, there'll be an appeal.
There for sure. There's a lot of different angles we need to be paying attention to and make sure we're defending our communities. There was a really nice final piece, just a recommendation that came online to the Carla shared. So that was, I think, how we ended the correspondence piece today, with some more praise from staff. Always nice when we receive those. The next thing, I think we're on to old business, trustee committees.
That's correct, and I don't believe that any committee met over the last month that I'm aware of.
Nor am I aware of. Maybe else here at the table is something we're not aware of.
Secret meetings occur. All right, that brings us to the South Civics Award.
Yes. So George, you and Kate and I have all spoken and are in unanimous agreement and very happy to announce that the recommended recipient of the 2025 South Civics Award is James Kay, who I mentioned earlier.
Congratulations. Yes, definitely.
So I think we need an official motion to make the award official for the award.
That's true. All right, can we have a motion? All right, and a second? And all in favor? Right on that award? All right, fantastic.
You got all that for the minutes, Casey?
Absolutely.
Thank you. We're really pleased. I will work and we'll do a press release, we'll do a photo shoot. And thank you for giving that. Please, you know, just be a little bit extra winged as sales as it goes up to galling. The final point in old business is patrons in the library. We certainly had plenty of patrons in the library. We have not had any new trespass orders, everything of that nature since the last time.
Great. All right, on to new business then. All right, well, Clayton and I discussed this during our pre-board meeting meeting. And we kind of made the determination that, due to the fact that, first of all, the board is going to be a little light this evening with a couple of members missing, and the fact that we want to take a new approach to appointing members to various subcommittees and different positions that will hold those appointments and meetings to an ad hoc committee meeting. This way, it'll allow all board members to kind of, first of all, take a little time to think about their futures, what they have on their plates, what they're thinking about for their own personal lives, as well as their service on the board, and then think about where they might want to serve. And then you can submit your comments, and then the ad hoc committee can take all of that and formulate a plan for next fiscal year as far as those positions on those subcommittees, as well as for the vice chair. But for the chair position, we'd like to nominate Sherry for next fiscal year. And so first of all, Sherry, are you interested in?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll need to have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Sherry.
Ray, I'd like a second.
Fantastic. So all in favor of having Sherry be the next chair?
Aye.
All right, fantastic.
Thank you, Sherry, for accepting my report. And George, thank you so much for all you did this.
My pleasure. So we will meet and we'll set up a meeting. But as I mentioned, we'll encourage all the board members to, you know, again.
Is there certain things you want, you want an email on this?
I think that's what we'll probably do. We'll send an email out that you can respond to.
Okay, that's a good idea.
And then that way, you know, think about, again, you know, what your availability will be and then what groups, what subcommittees that you may want to serve on, as well as we'll be meeting a vice chair. And so that's, you know, since everyone that has served has kind of rotated through all these positions, we felt it was better this way to kind of open it up to, you know, your availability and interests.
Okay. And when you send that out, you click the date you want.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we included, just so if you missed a page in the packet, there is a page about the current subcommittee membership, and it includes the terms that everybody has, you know, the year that it was started and then. Exactly, exactly. So it would be helpful as people are plotting their own personal journeys and deciding about levels of commitment that people would be comfortable with. The next two pieces are really just informational so that, well, so we know when to meet it, in September. Because that is, you know, we should have, I guess, agreed that we're going to meet at the first time, but then we would approve the entire trustee meeting schedule at that September meeting, is historically what we've done. And at the September meeting, we've also historically approved the calendar for the next calendar year. So when will I be closed? So it's just so that, they're there for the record, and we can review them over the summer, make sure we didn't miss anything. Everybody's aware, but we'll actually have the vote on those both in September.
I know last year we talked, there was some conversation around the dates of closings of libraries' schedules. So was there anything to look out for?
It's really just the contract and what's reflected. The contract is reflected here, and I took this year's, like, the final calendar for this year, and I took every date that we were closed this year and just carried it forward to the time of this. And the same for the trustee meeting schedule. I took the order of people who come in as our guests, and just, I just replaced that, updated the dates.
Have you, has there been any feedback, negative or positive? I know that we've now kind of come in sync with the town with building closures and whatnot. Have you heard anything?
The only time where it got a little tricky with the contract, honestly, is we had the language that the library will close when Town Hall is closed. And then last summer, they went to a summer schedule and started closing Town Hall on Fridays. And we did not adopt the same course. So that was a little bit of a deviation, but we did not think that there was support from the trustees, from the community to also close the library on Fridays.
Do they have 10-hour days, Monday through Thursday?
Honestly, I don't know. I think that may be how they're doing it, and we have 12-hour days, Monday through Thursday.
Yeah. No, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
All day Friday?
Casey, were they doing noon Fridays? I don't remember. Do you? Was it noon?
Just curious.
I think it was noon.
I just made some notes on seniority, because we have used that as a basis for running through the cycle. Sarah is by far the most senior member of the board. There's a big gap of many years between her and the second most, which is me. And then Margaret, your third, and Donna's fourth, and George fifth, and she places sixth. I thought it might be useful to know when each of us is due to be up for election next.
That's why I included this.
That's what's there.
Exactly.
Would you mind just running through that now?
No, we'd mind at all.
Here it is, Joe.
In next year, so this year is when Sherry and Donna were just reelected. Next elections, if you choose to run again, are yourself, John, and Margaret, and then George and Sarah are together.
Next year following.
In '27 will be the next election.
So I should start getting signatures now.
One thing I did want to point out is on the trustee meeting schedule, I didn't notice that if we go, our traditional meeting time, with the exception of June, is the second Tuesday of every month. The second Tuesday of November is November 11th. We will not be meeting on Veterans Day, the library will be closed. So I proposed that we move that to the Wednesday that week as well, November 12th. That's just an exception to look out for. It seemed like a no-brainer, but something I should mention. Thank you.
Yes. The not very tightly set up procedure by which people have found their ways to the three committees, in my tenure, there usually have been one or two people who seem like a natural for personnel or for finance. And a lot of people who could do any of those committees, but say, use me where you want to use me. So that'll leave, if that's still the attitudes that the six of us have, that'll leave a lot of discretion to the ad hoc committee, I guess, in trying to suggest what combinations would make the most sense. What we haven't typically had is a goal, let's say, of saying, we want a senior person and a junior person on each committee.
Well, the bylaws did say that, I thought they said that the person who has been on the committee the longest is the senior person.
On the committee itself?
Yeah, on the committee itself.
Meaning this committee?
No, on the subcommittees.
So that would mean that.
So not necessarily the person who has been on the board the longest, the person who has been on the subcommittee the longest.
So for example, if Sarah wanted to pick a committee that she has in general been on, she would not be the chair of that subcommittee.
Right.
I'm not sure if the bylaws do say that. I had to check.
Yeah, there's something on the bylaws that says that.
I really overthought what Margaret.
Yeah, and I totally accept that. I also think that historically, our practice has been to ask each subcommittee to just kind of decide who they wish to be their committee or their chair. And it was left to the subcommittee to decide. It wasn't, we've never had to stand on what was official, that they, you know, if Sarah was, whoever was the longest standing wanted to defer to somebody else in that committee, and now it's the committee's will. I think the committee would be happy with that decision.
Yeah, you know, when I sent my thing back, I'm going to send that piece from the bylaws. But yeah, we call that being part of the bylaws, that the person who has been on that subcommittee the longest.
Well, the other, and I'll try to stop after this point. When I got involved, we had a couple of, in fact, going back years before I was on, there were one or two members of the board with really exceptional financial experience in their work lives and in their time on board. And so there was a shared understanding that you want to make sure at least one and maybe all of those wind up on the board.
On the finance committee.
On the finance committee. And to a lesser extent, there were people who had at least been through a cycle of personnel contracts here. You want to make sure they would be. Now, contrast that with current situation. Changes that manager Mizuko has put in place have set the board to the side on finances. Changes that manager Mizuko has put in place have set the board to the side on finances. It's all pretty well driven out of your dialogue with, you know, personnel, I think, has completely-
Shifted.
They, when they're having critical discussions, they, the board is not allowed to be part of that, is my impression.
I think there's a little more nuance, but, but I don't think your general sense is off.
Where, where I'm going with this is, I'm not sure that, that we would prioritize finance and personnel as areas, that we must have somebody strong from the board, because the board's role is not going to be that strong. Now, the question I have is, this is an opportunity, is there something else? Like, is there somebody who's been involved in big capital planning business, kinds of projects in some other setting, and if that's going to be our life for the next three to six years, maybe you want to have one of the committees that's just that?
That's true, yeah, that's true. I think these are all good questions that we should take up in ad hoc.
Yep.
And I'm glad that you're on ad hoc. But everyone will be invited to our December.
Absolutely. All right then, that, and so you can look forward to that, we'll, we'll get that email set up from there, we can, ad hoc, plan a meeting date, and then of course, as Clayton just mentioned, everyone will be invited to hash all this out for next year. All right, search warrants and miscellaneous advisors.
I don't have any to report. I'm always grateful, and that's-
And we all are.
I do have a reminder next week.
Just to get back to the bylaws, here it is in section two, standing committee should have at least two men, two members, and the committee shall be chaired by the trustee with the longest tenure on the committee.
There you go.
That's pretty clear.
But the committee, in the way that that term is used in the bylaws, may refer to the board?
No, it says the standing committee on the finance and budget shall have at least two members, and the committee shall be chaired by the trustee with the longest tenure on the committee, this team. So that's the finance.
I think that's pretty clear.
Now, if I was, I'm just looking at that one. If I went back to personnel, that would say the same thing.
Okay. I'm thinking of other committees I'm on where they get themselves very confused, because the committee is the name of the, of the top body-
Yeah.
And it's also the name of all the subordinate bodies.
I think we're assisted here by being a board of committees, and so that it should hopefully clear our priorities, or think of those. So if you're a committee with committees, that does, yeah, there's potential confusion.
Yeah, so let me see if it specifically says.
You're on it, Margaret, and I defer to your better data.
I have a few neurons working. Just a few. Clicking tonight, I'll find the one about, if you want, I'll find the one about the personnel, but it states the same way I remember. Okay, I'll put it in there.
Great.
All right.
Great, thank you. And a couple of pieces that were just kind of late-breaking announcements that I wanted to share, just this, was it this morning? Is today the 11th? Today is the 11th, so it was this morning. Got temporary, some, some dates to hold for a town meeting after the next year, so if you're interested in attending, we're looking at the fall town meeting, likely being on, starting on Thursday, November 13th, and if needed, continuing on Monday, November 17th. The winter town meeting is, is, you know, is slated, you know, it's all it has to, is pending approval by select board, and, you know, it has to go through the channels, but I just thought it would be useful. So Monday, March 16th, and continuing on Thursday, March 19th, and then the spring town, and that's if we have the winter town meeting, and that's traditionally in the fall, is when we do capital, winter is when we do land use, and then spring, which is the annual town meeting, and any special town meetings like we just experienced a few weeks ago, is scheduled right now to commence on Monday, May 11th, and then continue if needed on Thursday, May 14th, Monday, May 18th, and Thursday, May 21st.
And fall was November 13th.
Exactly, and then the following Monday, November 17th. The other thing that I wanted to see if there was interest, in looking at some staff issues recently, we have a staff member who is about to finish a master's in library science, which is very exciting, and we've had other staff members who have also completed masters in library science while they've been working here, and it would be nice to have some way to recognize the professional accomplishments. And so I would like to ask if we could have a meeting of the personnel committee, subcommittee to think about, and this came up after I was, after our conversation the other night, and I was talking with Kate this morning about this, really came from that, to look at what we could do to fairly inequitably recognize staff professional accomplishments. It'd be nice to have some kind of formal system to recognize and to commend people for doing that extra work above and beyond their job in the, in the field. So if there's interest in that, I would like to recommend that we can be in the personnel committee at some point this summer to start grappling with how we could do that systematically.
I love that idea.
As you're looking at accomplishments that might merit that kind of recognition, we just had retirement by someone who's one of the five longest-serving staff people in all of Norman, and I'd be interested to see who's now in the batter's box per number two.
Looking at longevity issues, which would be something the personnel could look at too, just survival, right?
Well, that sounds a little frightening.
But, and then the person who's about to graduate is not the first since even since I've been here, who's completed a degree program, but we haven't had a systemic way to make sure we're recognizing those accomplishments, and I think it would be in our best interest to put something in place and just think about how we can really just recognize people who are going above and beyond.
Okay, it's a great idea.
And it does seem like a way, a realm in which the trustees in personnel could have a really positive impact in the library, so.
Okay, so if you want to put that in that, then you send in another vote that-
Right.
That would be a person, yeah, but we can combine those.
Yeah, we can combine those, and then we'll, we can arrange those meetings, they don't have to be held at the same time.
No, just so you get a date.
Get a date, stick it together, and have that discussion as well. And so have, think of ideas.
Do we want to have a vote to agree that we'll meet on September 9th? Because that's on the calendar, we haven't approved yet. So you may want to have a vote just to make sure that that's official.
That sounds like a great idea.
I make a motion.
You make a motion, I have a second.
I'll second that motion.
That's fine, okay. Can we have a vote to meet, to approve the meeting on September 9th of next, of this coming year? So approve a, a, a-
Awesome.
Fantastic. All right, then I guess that takes us all the way to point number nine. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion.
You make a motion, anyone want to second?
I'll second.
I'll second. All right, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
All right.
All right.
All right, thank you, everyone.